Could I have your attention, please? We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board meeting for July 16, 2018. Tonight, we have seven matters on the agenda, a bunch of new public hearings, and all sorts of things. At this point, I'm going to take the agenda out of order if I have no objection from the Planning Board members. Hearing none. I see that we have one request for continuance on 268 Mount Vernon Street and 5 Barnum Street. Does the applicant want to be heard on the request for the continuance? Attorney Theodore? And we see the letter from you saying that you want some more time to work on the engineering. Is that correct?
That is correct. The matter's not ready to go forward today. We ask for a continuance to August 20, I believe.
Any Board members have any questions? If not, what's the request of the Board?
Chairman, I make a motion to continue the hearing until August 20.
Yes, next.
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. Lockhart, second by Mr. Malovich. Call in favor say aye.
Aye.
Matter continued to August 20. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
For the record, I will be abstaining on that.
Okay, thank you. So we do have, okay, so you're not going to vote on that. Jordan, you're going to vote on the continuance as well?
Yes.
Okay, so we have five for the vote and one abstain. Okay, thank you. Next matter I'm going to take is the minor modification on 530 Stevens Street. Lowell Classic is requesting a minor modification to the proposed stormwater management system. May we have an update, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members. I just want to circle back around. We got the site plan approval last June. Subsequent to that, we learned that the outlet pipe for our design ties into a new line in Galligan Road. It was our understanding at the time of the design that that line was intended as a sewer separation project, although it does separate the sewer from the drainage. The real intent for that line was to alleviate a groundwater problem in the neighborhood. And I guess through Lowell Wastewater Treatment, they ran a program, I think it was for $100, they allowed all the people in that neighborhood to tie into that line. So we looked into that a little bit further and talked to some folks at Lowell Wastewater, only to find out that putting water back into the ground is not something that we should be doing in that neighborhood. So we're looking for a minor modification to redesign that drainage so that we take advantage of that new line that is in. And we've got a way we can do that, quite simply, actually, as opposed to the way it was proposed at the design. And we'd be happy to work with, I think it's Lowell Wastewater now that takes a look at that design work. Be happy to work with them, with Brian Melissi and Whitman and Bingham. He could explain the engineering.
Thank you.
I could talk all night about it. For the record, Brian Melissi with Whitman and Bingham Associates. If any of the Board members remember the plan, we had an underground pipe detention system on one side of the property, and there was an existing recharge system underneath the existing paving. And the edict that we had gotten from engineering at the time was to enlarge that recharge area. And again, Mr. Foley just said, working with wastewater treatment plant guys down there, I've been working on a couple of the other designs that we've been doing, we've been talking about it for a little while. It was brought to our attention that additional recharge, and even some of the recharge that's there now may be kind of causing an issue with some of the neighbors. Again, that's some pump program. And so what we're going to simply do is take the underground detention system and move it and use that to replace the recharge system. So we're going to get rid of the recharge system, provide some detention, stormwater detention, and tie it back into the system. And again, we've been kind of working with Mike Stewart at Wastewater Treatment to do this. And again, we're here tonight to ask you for that minor modification. We would certainly chase our approval letter down from Wastewater Treatment Plant for the file if you guys see us, you'll allow us to go forward.
So we received a letter from Wastewater by Mike Stewart dated June 28. So do you have a copy of that letter? Are you guys in agreement with that?
We do not.
May I hand it to you? They gave that to us. I'd like you to take a chance to look that over and let me know if you have any comments on that, or why you have a chance to look that over. But I do recall at that last meeting, we spent a lot of time on the water situation. I think Mr. Fischett had most of the questions on it. And there's some concerns up there. Obviously, if there's anything we can do to help make it better, we always feel, you know. Any amendment on any site plan that we've always approved, it comes back to make the project better. They're usually in favor, especially once you start building something, you find things that might work to make the project better.
Yeah. I mean, again, this is...
Was that letter satisfactory to you?
It does. Exactly what we've been talking about and exactly what we've been kind of working towards, I hope, so.
So you're requesting that this be a minor modification to the site plan approval, correct?
We do.
Okay. Any Board members have any questions at this time? I'll make a motion that is not a substantial and material change.
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made in second, that is not a material substantial change. And I will make a motion that we amend the site plan as requested, as requested by the letter that we got from the Sewer Department.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Back to the order of the agenda. Site plan review and special permit, 78-90 Lakeview Ave. An application was submitted by GDS Enterprise, Inc., seeking site plan review and special permit approval to redevelop an existing building and lot into a new Domino's restaurant at the above address. The parcels in the urban mixed-use zoning district require site plan review under Section 11.4.2.3 for proposing to build more than 14 parking spaces and special permit approval under Section 6.1.5.5 for reduction of off-street parking, as well as approval for any other relief required under the zoning ordinance. This matter was continued from our June meeting. A lot of questions come up about what the building looked like, and the applicants said they'll come back with new designs. So at this point in time, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Jeff Schenbeckler. I have owned and operated Domino's Pizza Stores in Lowell since 1986, and I've come back before this evening with a couple of different options for the building, similar in style, but we made some changes that the Board recommended at the last meeting. If you look at the set of plans dated June 20, 2018, in the bottom right-hand corner, you'll note that the customer entrance is still on the parking lot side of the building nearest to VFW Highway. So in this set of plans, they're proposing to leave that as it was on the initial set of plans. Now, if you turn to the third page, or the perspective from Lakeview Ave, you can see we made quite an improvement to that side of the building. We added windows and awnings and wood siding to improve the look of the building from the Lakeview Ave perspective. Now, you see as it wraps around the corner to your left, that's as if the Giorgio's Pizza Building was not there anymore. It would actually only go over about 10 feet, that wood siding, if the Giorgio's Building The next page, a perspective looking south, is just another look at that Lakeview Ave side of the building. And then two or three pages later, it's entitled "The Right Elevation," and that is, again, a perspective, if Giorgio's Building was not there anymore, what that side of the building Any questions on that set of plans?
Mr. Chairman?
Not this? Okay, go ahead.
You had mentioned at the last meeting that you were in negotiations to purchase the Giorgio property. Is there any indication that that will, in fact, be going forward at this point?
I cannot say for sure if that's going to go forward. I made a call to the Theodore family today and spoke to Mr. Theodore's son, Michael, and he was unsure where the matter was at. It's being challenged, the estate's being challenged. I'm not sure if that's the correct legal term, but so it's being held up in court. So I don't know, I can't say for sure when and if that will happen.
So obviously, that would impact what you would do with that end of the building if, in fact, you did not acquire the rights to that property.
Correct.
But then, that property would still remain and the view would be no different?
That side of the building would be...
If, in fact, that's where it ends up, which...
The other three sides of the building would be fabulous.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Trey.
Okay, so, you know, what we're trying to do is take an underutilized building and turn it into an attractive and vibrant property, hopefully all four sides, to an area that's really a key entryway into the city. It's, I think, the second busiest intersection in the city. There are a number of reasons why I'd like to leave the customer entrance on the parking lot side, on the VFW side of the building, one of which is I'll have, I'll be able to put my lobby there and have customers in an active business lobby on the busiest street. It's much busier than Lakeview Avenue is, and that's good for business. We'll do about 60% delivery, 40% carryout and dine-in sales, and less than 2% walk-in. We had talked about Lakeview Avenue being a walking neighborhood, but we'll do very little business from customers just walking by the store. The vast majority that come in will be pulling into the parking lot and then walking into that entrance from the parking lot. So we think that the entryway is best positioned to serve the majority of our customers. Another point I'd like to make that we made before is, Lakeview Avenue gets a little bit tight down at that end, and there's a sharp turn there. People do tend to, for whatever reason, park on the sidewalk, which would make an entry on Lakeview Avenue just a little bit snug, and I don't think is safe as having an entryway around the corner where we are proposing it. Just a couple of minor things. Interior design has been completed for the building with the entryway on the parking lot side, VFW side of the building, so we'd have to start all over there, which would be a fairly sizable cost. And if we are allowed to approve to go with the current plan, we're able to utilize an existing overhead garage door for storage and for our commissary deliveries. If we have to move the entrance, we would have to build a new garage door, and that, again, would be an additional expense. So that's all I have to say on that one. On the next set of drawings that are dated June 29, 2018, in the bottom right-hand corner, I have moved the entryway and added an entryway. You'll have to go to the third page, the perspective looking south, or the fourth page, excuse me, the perspective looking south, to get a look at both of those entryways. Now, if you're looking at that, you can see that there's an entryway, two entryways on the corners, on the corner of the building. So if they want to enter off of Lakeview Avenue, they can. If they're coming from the parking lot, they can enter from the parking lot side without having to go around the corner to Lakeview Ave. This is not our preferred plan, but I did want to show an option with an entryway on Lakeview Ave, because one of the Board members had mentioned that in the previous meeting. We prefer to go with the first option and hope that you will approve that option. Are there any additional questions I can answer for you?
I have none at this time. I'll reserve mine till later. Since it's a public hearing, I'll wait to hear more from the public, and if I have more questions on this, I'll address them then. So anything else you want to mention? So basically, these are two sets of drawings that you gave us compared to what we had last time, right?
Correct.
Do you have anything else you want to add? If not, I'll turn it over to the public, then ask the Board members.
I have, do you guys have anything to add?
Very briefly, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
For the record, my name is Brian Melissi with Whitman and Bingham Associates. Just to give the Board a very quick update, we were in front of Lowell Conservation Commission. They have approved the project and issued their order of conditions, as well as we met with storm owner, Mike Stewart, and Tina down at Wastewater Treatment Plant to review the proposed storm order for the project. And I don't want to put any words in their mouths, but I believe they were satisfied with the design. So again, just to give you that brief update. Thank you.
Yeah, the only thing we got from Wastewater was it says, "Test pitch prior to construction will characterize soil classification on conforming the ability to infiltrate stormwater." Opponent must contact city representative to witness test pit. Do you have no problem with that, sir?
Absolutely not. No, we discussed that at the meeting.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody here to see if they want to speak in favor of this project?
Hello, my name is Sandy McNamara, president of the Senate of Community Coalition. First, I want to ask if I could have a copy of the site plans. And second, regardless of what building Domino's builds in this city, it's remarkable. If you've been into Mammoth Road or onto Chansford Street, they just do such a glamorous job. And I'm for that. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mia. Anyone else like to speak in favor of the project? In favor? Favor? Anybody in opposition? Again, anybody in opposition? 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 This time, I'll turn it over to the Board members. They have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Christine, did staff have any comments on these two designs, one in favor, one a better? Do you mind if I ask what, if your staff had a chance to look them over?
Yes, I believe...
Did you have a chance to make a comment on option?
Staff had an opportunity to comment on option two.
Would you be the June 29 drawings?
The June...
Twenty?
20th drawings.
Okay, so we have the 20th and the...
And there were some concerns about there not being on an entryway. I think based off one of the comments from one of the members, the concern was the activation on Lakeview Ave. So from a design perspective, I think staff prefers option two.
Would you be dated June 29?
Which is the June 20th.
Twenty?
Yeah, the June 20th design.
So...
No, I'm sorry, I have that backwards. Staff prefers option three, which is the June 29.
Design. So this one has...
He had concerns about June 20th.
So this is because it has the two different openings, one on Lakeview and one on the back?
Yes.
So they prefer 29 with the other entrance on...
Correct.
So actually, they have the two entrances instead of the one?
Correct.
All right. Any Board members comment?
Just have one question.
Yeah, Mr. Lockhart?
I'm referring to a June 11 memo from Jared Alves to us, titled 78-90 Lakeview Ave. There's an item here, let me see, page three, about proposed screen along Lakeview Avenue. May want to consider requiring the applicant to install a similar evergreen screen, solid transfer wall. Has that item been addressed?
We would be willing to put a solid fence up there. It hasn't, we haven't revised the site plan particularly to that comment yet, because we had read it in the comments originally, but I didn't talk about it with the Board. So I mean, if that was something, we would certainly do that.
In the same memo, there's 12 items listed by the Building Department. And just the first one, he says, "The design is unclear as to whether the existing structure is to be subdivided for the firewall, party wall, or demolished and rebuilt." Is that, can you just address that and explain that?
Sure.
Maybe some of these other comments here?
Yep. The majority of those, if not all those, comments made by the Building Department really belong at the building permit stage. We had provided the Board in our initial submittal with the architectural plans that showed the fit-up of the interior. They're certainly not meant to be a full-blown building permit set. However, most of those comments, if not all of them, again, would be taken care of at that stage. And it's not like we don't really have any concerns, we would just have to provide some additional information.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lockhart. Any other Board members questions? Mr. Malovich?
Yes, I would like to vote on the auction for the June 29, having the entrance on both the street and the parking lot. That's the first thing. The landscape plan on the abutting property toward Aiken Ave, is there going to be a solid screen?
There is, yeah. The plans now show a vegetative screen, but answering Mr. Lockhart's concerns or from that, we would put a solid fence in there, solid screen.
Yeah, I'm talking about along the property that fronts on Lakeview Ave.
So if I'm standing on Lakeview Ave, looking at the project to the right, which is number 100 Lakeview?
Yeah, okay. All right, I misunderstood that one.
I apologize.
I think that's my only questions at this point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Malovich.
Russ Fischett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you wouldn't mind, Brian, could we go over the site plan once again? And I would agree with staff. Again, we brought up the concern in the design of the building to incorporate the walkability of the neighborhood. And I understand the applicant's thoughts, and I think the design from June 29 captures the best of both worlds. You still have the entrance at the parking lot, and then we still have the entrance on Lakeview Ave, which would be in keeping with the neighborhood-type businesses that are there. But I would like to go over that site plan once again. That was quite some time ago. And what I'm concerned, or I don't know, is were there any changes as a result of Conservation approval? And if you could go over that, please.
There were no changes.
Okay.
For the Conservation Commission, they did not have any changes. We talked about the flood plan more than anything else, but they were happy with the screening, happy with the grading. And so this is the kind of the rudimentary, colored-up plan that we had last time when we submitted, when we talked to you guys originally. VFW Highway at the bottom, Lakeview Ave here. This is the property we were just referring to as 100 Lakeview Ave, where we originally, again, showed that vegetative screen.
And what's the screening going to be based on that diagram?
It's going to, now, it's going, based on this, it's a vegetative, evergreen screen. Pines or arborvitae, something along those lines. Now, it's going to be revised to a fence, a solid fence.
So it's not going to be what's on that plan?
Correct.
It's going to be a solid fence?
All right.
That's what I want to understand. So we don't, do we, Christine, do we have a final version of this? Did I miss that?
No, we didn't get revised site plans.
Again, and I do apologize, but some of the, the issue last time was really centered around the building elevators.
Well, I understand, but this is site plan approval, so...
No, without a doubt. And so some of the conditions that's starting to just come out, so we can certainly change that. But as far as the layout goes, the interior landscaping, the parking, we hadn't received any comments, any negative comments, so there's no reason to change that yet. Hopefully, no reason to change it at all.
So I think what I would want to do then is the final, so does DPD sign off on a final landscaping plan then? Christine?
We have not signed off on one as of yet.
Christine, anything? Okay. Okay. So from that plan, I see some trees on VFW, right? Are those...
And there's trees in...
Trees in that middle...
In the submittal package, there is a landscape and a lining plan, which we kind of show some of these a little bit more to the forefront. I just wanted to incorporate everything on this one here.
Right.
But we do have the requisite number of trees, we had some screening on VFW. The building on number 100 is very close, so again, we're doing what we can do on this side.
And then what is that, and so what is that fence going to look like then as a hardscape then?
I mean, I'd have to talk to Jeff, but more than likely, just a... I mean, I'd have to talk to Jeff, but more than likely, just a white vinyl fence is something that would come to mind, a solid screen, white vinyl, unless it's a, a preference of the board to have some other material.
It used to be a controversial issue, wasn't it? I have no problem with that.
Again, we do have our requisite landscape islands out front. We don't want to plant really too big out here that's going to block any site distance and whatnot along Lakeview Ave. So it'll be loamed and seeded, emulched, and incorporate some of the shade trees.
And then you have the screening for the dumpster.
Dumpster's going down here, that will be fenced as well, solid fence.
Yep. Okay.
And I believe that's the white vinyl, there is a detail on the plans for that.
And then the idea would be if you do not acquire the, the adjacent property, then this would be, you would incorporate the changes submitted here other than obviously that, that side.
As Mrs. Schenblass had said, what they would do is they would kind of, they would wrap the exterior of the building as much as they could.
Right.
You know, behind the existing George Jones building. And so you would certainly see it turn the corner.
Right.
But there's literally, you know, not enough room to get in there to work, so.
Right. All right. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Snetsky, any questions, comment?
Yes, I just, in looking at my notes, I see that we had had a question that was raised by Mr. Fichette about the, looking for comments from the traffic engineer. Have we received any, Christine? No. Okay. As far as the design, I can see and understand the merits of both. I think if we are in fact looking to make this as neighborhood-friendly as possible, then perhaps the ones with the entrance towards the Lakeview Avenue side, you know, may accomplish that better. I mean, I certainly understand and see, you know, the rationale of both, but in, particularly in hearing, you know, some of my colleagues' comments in that regard, you know, I would lean in that direction. And there was some question about the remainder of the building. Is it the intent that the facade design would incorporate that at this stage of the game so that, you know, once you determine what else might be in that building, you know, that would, that facade would essentially remain as designed here?
Well, my, my hope is that it will become, at least to another business at some point.
Right.
I'm waiting to see what happens with the George Jones property before I make a final decision.
But that being said, the, the windows and-
That would also-
And, and entryways would essentially, if not exactly, certainly be in keeping with this, this whole design?
Correct. Just as you see on the drawing. So it would, even if there was no business occupying that space, it would still look like a storefront, kind of incorporating, like we talked about at the last meeting, the same thing that CDS did with their windows off the parking lot. You know, they put boxes in and put some messaging behind us, so as opposed to having a blank wall, you've got some windows that makes it look a little more inviting.
And then depending on what goes in there, you, you know, you could modify those on the interior as opposed to the exterior?
We could modify a couple of them, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have two comments. One, I like the facade a lot better than we saw last time on Lakeview Ave. Much better looking, as we talked about. And the two designs that I see, I like June 29th one better. I do like the other entrance coming off the Lakeview Ave, but I think it's much better than last time. I think it did a good job wrapping the whole, you know, facade around to make it look a lot nicer, dressing up Lakeview Ave, so I like it a lot better. So, thank you. Positive, huh? Any board members have any further questions, or was it requested of board? So we have a request for a special permit and a site plan review. So we need two votes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the following conditions. The approval is subject to final landscape approval by DPD, subject to any further comments from the city's traffic engineer, final approval of the storm water management plan, subject to DPD approving the solid fence screening, and that the applicant incorporate the design of the building submitted as of dated June 29th.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, we have a motion by Mr. Fichette, seconded by Mr. Lockhart. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair vote yes, so that motion carries. Five in favor, none against. And now we need one for the special permit.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit incorporating all of the conditions that were put in effect with the approval of the special, the site plan review.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Fichette, seconded by Mr. Snetsky. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair vote yes, so that motion carries as well. Five in favor, none against. Good luck, wish you well.
All right. Good job.
Good luck, sir. Okay, moving along on the agenda, the next matter is a amended site plan review and special permit for 279 Dutton Street.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I will be abstaining on this matter.
So an application was submitted by, excuse me, 279 Dutton Street LLC, seeking site plan review and special permit approval from the Lowell Planning Board to add two stories and two residential dwelling units to an existing building. The building is in the urban mixed-use district and needs approval for the men's site plan under section 11.4.2.2 for the construction of a residential dwelling structure with more than three units, and amended special permit under section 12.1D and any relief from the zoning. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Mr. Chairman, George Theodore, 133 Market Street, representing the applicant, 279 Dutton Street LLC, of which Christopher Natali is the principal. As you know, we were before this board last spring, in which we obtained a site plan approval and a special permit to construct or to redevelop this property at 279 Dutton Street for four residential units. These were four residential studio-type units at this property. The building consists of two floors and a basement. What I handed out right here immediately, prior to announcing the, the public hearing, was a letter from Macheras Service Mart, which indicates that we are leasing four additional spaces for the requested two units. Now, what the applicant seeks to, to accomplish at the site is to add two floors or two stories to the building. Each floor will, will comprise one residential unit. The third floor will comprise a one-bedroom unit of approximately 900 square feet, I believe it's 893 square feet. And the fourth floor, again, will comprise a residential unit of, again, of approximately 895 square feet, which will have two bedrooms. Each of the units will have balconies on both sides of the property that will have some, some magnificent views of the city. And each of the units will have to go to the zoning board for variances for parking, because we will have the parking in a private lot, which is less than 400 square feet from the property at the Macheras Service Mart on Broadway. This is exactly what we had, we did in the previous instance, in which we had four units. We had eight spaces leased from the Macheras Service Mart. In this situation here, we're adding an additional four, four spaces from them, so we'll have 12 spaces for the property. One unique feature of this building is the historic inventory, which we handed out previously. Now ultimately, the, the approval is going to have to come from the historic board on this to add these two floors. That's the ultimate decision-maker on this. And what we have, we do not have approval yet. We were going to go for preliminary, we've had some preliminary discussions, but what we do have is we had some information from the past that there was an additional floor there, or there may have been an additional floor. We have yet to decide that, if it's a historical fact. What we do have is a rendering there from an old advertisement that shows a third floor on there, and we have a picture from 1890, which was handed out. This is the rendering that we have, which is interesting that it shows the third floor on there, on that building, which is part of the handouts that we have. And part of this is significant for the request for this application before you to add two floors, because it goes to the, to the, to the height of the actual building in that the third floor that we are going to use that exists right now on the premises is recessed about seven feet from the top of the building. So that when we add the two additional floors, we will be adding approximately 14 feet. So it wouldn't be over 20 feet that we would be adding, it would be approximately 14 feet since the third floor is actually recessed in this building. In the prior determination, it was, it was, it was made that it would be consistent with the other, the other buildings on the site. And I, I just find it appropriate here, that's the, that's a, that's the site, as you see up on the wall, that's a, that's an artist's rendering there of the, of the Dutton Street site, and-
Did you bring that with you?
Isn't that interesting that's, that's right, that's right behind me, that there-
You take something down, I mean.
Again, in the prior, in the prior application, what we had there is that it would be consistent. And, and in the comments that we have from, from Mr. Alves, he does state in there that it would be higher than both of the buildings on either side, but it, it would be consistent with the, the property that you see sticking out here, which is, I believe it's 261, 261 Dutton Street, which is the site, I believe, of the old boys' club right there, is 261 Dutton Street. Is that 265?
It's 260.
I thought, from my-
Could you hold that plan up?
From the assessor's plan, I thought it was-
The one in front of us.
It shows 260, 261 on the, on the assessor's map here. But, but in any event, uh-
Excuse me, George. So in the aerial view-
You can see it, that of-
Yeah, that's-
Same height.
Which one, that's your building right there, right, where the- What's that? Like it looks like a bus stop or something there? What's your little sign below there?
Yeah, there's a little mark on it.
Okay. So that's the building question, okay. Could you just leave that one up, if you don't mind, sir, on the back wall? Right there, just leave that, could you leave that plan up there for the time being? All right, thank you, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So-
I wanted to make sure that we're all looking at.
Right, that's, that, yeah, that's, that's, that's an aerial shot of the, of the, of the site of the street right there. Now, Kristin and Natali, who's right here with us, he owns 295 Dutton Street, which is on the corner, and that, that consists of nine units there that he developed in 1999. And he did a magnificent job in developing that property. That was a boarded-up building at the time, and he owns that to this day. It's fully tenanted, and the, the building is thriving. That's the same type of work that he intends to do with this building right here. And part of the request to add two additional floors there and two additional units, in part, yes, we'd have to say, it, it makes it a far more viably economically to develop it in that manner. He's going to keep the property, he's going to develop the property, he's going to rent it, and those two units allow him to exercise some of his creative ability on that, in which he intends to make two very, very nice, high-end, market-rate buildings that are going to have balconies on both sides. And, and, and we believe that that will complement the area. Now, we have to convince the Lowell Historic Board of that, and, and we have yet to do that. So we have a lot more work to do on this, but we believe from the, adapting this building and developing this building further, that it could be, it would be consistent with the neighborhood. We're not impacting anything with respect, with respect to parking. We have the parking at the Macheras Service Mart, which we have a letter there in our file to do that. We also have an applicant developer landlord who is, who is a neighbor and who, who owns the property four doors down and who will continue to be there, and to be a good neighbor to everybody on that block, and also to do everything that he's done to maintain the property, to maintain that alleyway, and, and, and to cooperate with the surrounding property owners. So with all of that moving forward, we think that this would be an exciting project, and also keep in mind of what the city would like to do in its master plan is to add, add these, these high-quality units to add to the downtown as a, as a, as a hub, and to add to the, to the businesses downtown. And, and also at the same time, what we are doing here is we are redeveloping a historic building that has, you have the historic inventory right there, and we're allowing this to happen. We have the renderings here, we have some of the photographs that we have there, which are, those are there because those are some of the views that you would have from the front and the back, the balconies. So it would give an opportunity to make some very impressive units, and at the same time, again, Mr. Natali has been in this neighborhood here, developing his building, maintaining his building, maintaining his property for the last 20 years, so he expects to be a good neighbor from, you know, from, from this time forward for many years to So we're here to answer any questions you may have, and-
Okay, thank you, Counselor. At this point in time, I'll turn it over to the public. Anybody here this evening who want to speak in favor of this project? Anybody in favor? Favor, in favor? At this time, anybody in opposition? Just state your name from the back and the address, please, sir.
My name is Steve Severson. I live two doors down from the projected property. Chris and I have been-
Pardon me? We have your address, please?
269 Dutton.
Thank you.
Chris and I have been neighbors for a long time, and we've been side-by-side at other hearings here against other projects that didn't work out very well. And I was here when the first planning board meeting was held, and I, I was here in support of the project. But the project then did not have two floors added to this building. And I feel very strongly that adding two floors to the building is going to change the look and aesthetics of the entire block. And for that major reason, I'm here in opposition to it. Also, it's, we're also adding more people, non-resident owners, to the population of the block. That's not a big deal, but it is another item. So I would like to say, Chris, best of luck on the piece, but without two floors. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? In opposition, anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone? This time, I'll turn it over. Any board members have any comments?
I had a couple of quick questions here.
Sure. Mr. Guy?
So for the-
So for the four additional parking spaces, the agreement you came to with the Macheras Service Mart, do you have any specifics on that, of how long that agreement will last?
Yeah, we intend to enter into a long-term lease.
Long-term agreement, okay.
And the fee will be whatever the city market rate is at the time.
And then the building department was looking for specified use of the roof deck, as well as occupancy capacity. You'll need that with your building permit.
Exactly. We'll be able to provide them with that information when we have some of the construction drawings done.
Okay, all right. That's all the questions I have this time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Geis. Anybody else? Mr. Malovich?
Are you scheduled for the historic board yet, George?
No, we haven't scheduled for a public hearing, because we're working with Steve, Mr. Stoll, right now. And if we do anything before we do a public hearing, would be an informal presentation before the board. We were going to do it this past July 9th, but it was a little premature for us to do that. I think we need some more working drawings with the historic board administrator, and have those a little bit more of a final form before we come before the board, even for an informal.
All right. We've had some preliminary discussions about it.
Yeah.
He's looking at whether that second story...
That second story is a big question mark.
Question, he's working on it.
Right.
You know, I have no problem with the project. I think it's a good project, but it boils down to that, I think, doesn't it?
It does, it absolutely does.
All right, so if you can make August 3rd date, that would be good. Move it right along.
Okay, we'll do that.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Malovich?
Yeah, I have no problem with the concept here of adding those two floors, but I have to defer to the Lowell Historic Board, because without their approval, is it going to happen?
Thank you. Mr. Snetsky?
I share the same thoughts as Mr. Malovich. Regardless of what we might do here tonight, without the approval of the historic board, this project would not be able to go forward. So, you know, I likewise would support the project, subject to historic board approval.
Because if we vote "no," and the historic board votes "no," then it doesn't go through.
It doesn't go through.
I mean, they have their own separate, unique discussion, and, I mean, they don't do the site plan in a special permit like we do, but yeah. Obviously, if it survives us, it doesn't show up the historic board, it goes forward. The only comment I had was, and you gave us the letter about the parking, that was my question coming in, because I saw in your narrative that you said you were going to have it, and I remember the last time that you did have it off-site, and I didn't know if you're picking it up tonight. So, and obviously, if we approve the site plan and a special permit, then obviously you have to have the off-site parking that will run with the project anyways, correct?
Correct.
Are there any other outstanding issues that the...
No, there are variances that we're requesting for lot area per dwelling unit, minimum lot size, and the variance that we're asking for is actually for the parking as well. So those are, we're scheduled to go before the Board of Appeals for a public hearing on Monday.
Right, but as far as historic board is concerned, that's really the...
That's the crux, that's the crux of it.
All right, we can take care of that.
And along with all that, of course, is the exterior, you know, materials, the windows and everything. But if the floors are approved, then those are all elements that we can work with.
I just had another quick question. If it was approved, it would still only be the second tallest building on the block, correct?
It...
48 feet, because 261 Dutton Street would then be the tallest.
That's what we believe is the case, that we're actually going to, ours is going to be 48 feet, and it'll be just shy of the other building.
Okay.
Councilor, you had a chance to see comments, right, from Mr. Jared Els. I noticed that just a couple there from Building, but I think a lot from Building Department, I think a lot of them in Engineering, but obviously, you have to satisfy them from the Building Department. I think one of them liked the, they're talking about some elevations that they think you have to, I think it's on Building Department, page three, just says, the elevation plan doesn't seem to match the floor plan.
Yeah, we have to correct that.
But there'll be a Building Department issue before you get a building permit, if it was approved?
Yeah. We'll correct that, we'll correct that with the Building Department. We were hoping to have that in here tonight for you.
And I think in the Engineering, most of that is all basics, except that they are asking for a traffic management plan?
Oh, yeah.
To be submitted, to approve the city's transportation engineer before work is done?
Yeah.
Any comment on that?
That's something that we would submit before we start construction, because it would impact all the traffic on Dutton Street.
So this is an amendment to what we've already approved. So the condition we put on last time was the site plan by Landplex stated April 20, 2017, is to be reviewed and approved by Engineering and Water and Sewer Department. So that condition's already in existence, correct?
Correct.
So any additional conditions that we may impose would be on top of the one that's already part of the approved site plan, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So we'd leave, okay. I got you, okay. Just checking to see if I have any comments. Okay. So do you just need the site plan from us and a special permit, or you need the site plan and special permit for us, right? They need to have it from the zoning board of appeals, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so you need...
Yep, site plan review and the special permit.
Yeah, and the special permit is because it's, what, more than...
More than four units.
More than four, yeah, okay. Yeah, more than the three units, okay. All right, just wanted to make sure I have that right, okay. And the board members have any follow-up questions at all? If not...
None.
Okay, so what's the request for the board? We need, they need two requests, as indicated, the site plan and a special permit?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan, subject to all previous conditions, and historic board approval.
I'll tuck in that, please.
Could I put the amendment in, as long as they have the letter here for the parking?
Certainly.
Commended?
Certainly.
Okay. So just to make sure that they continue to have the additional parking spaces off-site that's given to us by the letter? So basically, it would be the site plan approval with the previous condition as approved, right? And then obvious, the approval of the historic board? And then to make sure that they have, given to us as evidence tonight, that they have the letter for all the parking off-site, correct?
Right.
And commitment for them.
So that's made in the form of a motion for the site plan, right, Mr. Snetsky? Okay.
Oh, second motion.
Motion's made, it was, no, second by you, right, Bob, seconded before my question. So it was made by, second by Bob Malovich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we have five in favor of the site plan for the special permit. I'll make a motion that we approve the special permit with the same conditions as the site plan.
Second.
Motion made by Chairman Lenihan, seconded by Mr. Geis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All members say yes, so that special permit is approved as well.
Thank you very much.
Sir? So the next matter will be Central Street. I'm just waiting for one of the board members to come back. Looks like this is up, sir. Okay, moving along on the agenda, the next matter is a site plan review for 512, 520, 524, 534 Central Street. An application was submitted by Mark O'Hara, P.E., on behalf of the Portuguese-American Civic League for site plan review to expand an existing parking lot in the traditional mixed-use zoning district. The applicant is seeking site plan review under section 11.4 of the City of Lowell zoning ordinance. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mark O'Hara, O'Hara Engineering, 21 Mansion Drive, Lowell, Mass. And I am here on behalf of the Portuguese-American Civic League, the PACL, for this application for approval for a site plan review. The PACL is seeking to construct, or should I say reconstruct, a parking lot to create an additional 11 parking spaces, and also to improve traffic circulation on the site. The site is located on the east side of Central Street, between North and Katy Street, in the back central neighborhood of Lowell. As you had mentioned, it's on five separate but adjoining parcels that total approximately 43,200 square feet, which is about an acre. The site presently consists of a four-story structure containing a private social club on the first level, and it also has currently 56 parking spaces. The proposed work consists of expanding the parking area and also doing some landscaping. The parking area will increase impervious surfaces by about just shy of 4,000 square feet, which is about 12%, to mitigate the increase in impervious surfaces and stormwater runoff, or retention basin has been designed to intercept the runoff from the new parking area and recharge it back into the ground. The net effect of the development with regards to the stormwater runoff will be a reduction of approximately 9% of peak stormwater flows from the site. I think it's a pretty straightforward project. We did meet with staff and discuss whether we needed to appear before you or not, because I believe the regulations stated 14 or more parking spaces. But because this project would involve some additional traffic circulation, they thought it was appropriate that we come before you and discuss, in case you have any comments. The main reason for the changes is to provide better traffic circulation. The existing site is very narrow, the entranceway. I'm going to show you. That's the existing structure, and this is an aerial view, or an aerial photo that was taken, I think it was in March of this year. But that existing drive aisle only allows for cars to come in and park in an angle. They then have to either back out onto Central Street, or try to turn around on the site, or what they also do sometimes is exit out onto North Street. North Street's a one-way street, there's often cars parked on the other side of it. It's very difficult to negotiate those turns. So what these improvements would do is to widen that area, or you should say, provide an aisle that meets the city standards, 24 feet in width, and it also increases the parking by 11 spaces. And they also wanted at that time to dress up the site with some landscaping. So that's what we're showing on the site, is along the southernly side. Up until about six months ago, there was a residential structure which the PACL purchased with the intention of providing some landscaping. I have Manny Silva here from the Portuguese-American Civic League to answer any questions about those, you know, changes to the landscape. And that was one of the things, they contacted me and said, is there any way we can provide something that our customers could maybe use to be outside? It also would be, I think, an improvement to the neighborhood by dressing it up with some landscaping features and trees and so forth. And if you have any other questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody here this evening want to speak in favor of this project? Anybody in favor? In favor? Anybody in opposition? Anybody against? In opposition? In opposition? No? If you're not, I'll turn it over to the board members. Any questions, comments?
I did have one quick question.
Mr. Geis, go ahead.
I know that the plan is to have a gate on North Street, gates on North Street. The board does have concerns about first responders being able to gain access. Will the gates be locked? Are they necessary?
No, we're going to have the gates on North Street. They're not going to be locked, only at night.
Please, thank you for the record, thank you.
I'm Manny Silva.
Thank you, sir.
512 Central Street, Lowell, Mass.
Thank you very much.
The only reason that we put the gates there is because there's too much traffic going on there. And everybody knows, the police department knows, everybody, they go in there and they hide in the corner there, and that's what they do, their business. Now, there's a gate there, they won't be able to go in there and stay there overnight.
Okay.
That's the only reason.
All right, thank you. It's the only question I have this time.
Sure. Could I just follow up on that? What type of gate would it be?
It's an iron gate, where you can open and close it. In the daytime, it'll be open, at night, you know, 11 o'clock or whatever, we'll close it.
Would the fire department have access to get through that gate if they had to come in that way? Or they come in through Central, you believe?
No, fire department would come through Central Street.
Yeah, because that'd be the gate going on to the side street, right? North Street?
Yeah, the North Street. And the problem is...
Because we've a case in the pack where the fire department just open them themselves in emergency situation, you know? Some would be a chain link, some of them would cut, some of them would break.
No, I can give them a key, I mean, I have no problem with that. I mean, it's just try to...
Because sometimes, would it be key-coded, or how would you open and close your gate?
I haven't thought of it.
And everybody knows, the police department knows, everybody, they go in there and they hide in the corner there, and that's what they do, their business. Now, there's a gate there, they won't be able to go in there and stay there overnight.
Okay.
That's the only reason.
All right, thank you. It's the only question I have at this time.
Sure. Could I just follow up on that? What type of gate would it be?
It's an iron gate, where you can open and close it. In the daytime, we'll be open. At night, 11 o'clock or whatever, we'll close it.
Would the fire department have access to get through that gate if they had to come in that way, or they come in through Central, you believe?
No, fire department would come through Central Street.
Yeah, because that would be the gate going on to the side street, right? North Street?
Yeah, the North Street.
Because we've occasioned a pack where the fire department just open them themselves in emergency situation, you know? Some would be a chain link, some of them would cut, some of them would break.
No, I can give them a key. I mean, I have no problem with that. I mean, it's just try to...
Because sometimes, would it be key coded, or how would you open and close your gate?
I haven't thought about it, but we can key code it, it's fine.
If you did, maybe could they have access to the fire department, so they could get in there if they had to for any particular reason?
Yeah, we can do that. We can key code it and give the fire department a code for it. I have no problem with that.
All right, thank you.
The only reason is I'm trying to, you know, clean it back because the neighborhood, your neighbors there keep complaining to me that the people are there, parties there at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, and they do, and it's just a way to keep them out of there.
When I was up there, somebody was changing their oil in your backyard.
Pardon?
When I was there, somebody was changing their oil in the back of your lot.
Yeah, right. I believe, no, I believe it, and that's...
Last Monday morning at 10:30, somebody was on your truck changing his oil in the back right corner.
Yeah, and I believe it.
I didn't, I didn't know who it was, but they were changing their oil there.
I have to be a parking tent, I have to be out there and watch who goes in and out every day.
Okay, all right. Thank you, okay. Anything else on that, Mr. Geis? No? Okay, thank you. Any of the other board members?
I have a question.
Sure, Mr. Lockhart?
When you expand that parking lot, are you planning any more landscaping, any shade trees or anything in the lot? It's quite an open area, you could really dress it up nice with the neighborhood if you...
I'm sorry, what was your question again?
Shade trees?
Shade trees in the expanded area. It seems as though there'd be room for that.
Oh, yes, yep, that's what we're proposing, a few shade trees, maybe some picnic tables, monuments, flags, you know, dressing it up similar to what you've seen other social clubs do out in front of their sites, with flags and so forth. I don't think we've worked out the final details yet, but there will be some green space and landscaping and...
So you work with planning and development on a plan for that and...
I'm sorry?
You'll work with planning and development on a plan for that?
Not a problem.
Just work out the details, okay?
Yeah.
All right, that's all, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Snetsky, no, any questions? No? No, okay. Mr. Malovich, no? Mr. Vichet?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I have to say, the plan is, certainly improves the parking and the circulation and the attempt is to improve the aesthetics, the landscaping. So I think the basics of what you're doing is really positive. Just, it would have been, I would have liked to have seen final comments from the fire department with this proposal. So certainly, I would want to have a final sign-off from the fire department regarding the gate, and I wouldn't be prepared to put a condition on how the gate is to be locked or locked. I would make that subject to the fire department's final approval, as well as the circulation. From the memo, I'm assuming you saw the memo dated July 11th, or I think we all commented or some of us have commented from some of the issues on here. But one of the transportation comments, too, was the circulation of emergency vehicles through there, and especially, you know, I went there on Saturday and it was an event, and oh my God, it was, in its current state, it's really tough to maneuver around there. Even, so right now, if an emergency vehicle had to go in there, I think it would be tough. This is an improvement to what currently exists, I have to say. So from that perspective, I'm fine. Also, I believe the final engineering wastewater, I guess, would have to submit final approval. Although, I guess Christine, we don't have anything, it's, the comments are from engineering regarding the stormwater. Are they going to give the final sign-off on this, or is it going to be wastewater?
Wastewater.
Okay, all right.
I think it's a little tricky right now. We're in flux, we don't have a city engineer, but our DPW commissioner is a P.E., so he's been sort of working with wastewater, and so we've been getting comments from both.
That's why we're getting it that way. Okay, that's fine, yep, that's fine. So again, in general, I'm fine with what you're doing, but obviously, we would be looking at, I would be looking at those items as conditions.
We did receive some comments from wastewater. They were only able to partially comment because I think they were looking for some more time, but the biggest concern was what are the underlying soils and how fast, or can they receive the stormwater? So one of the requests, I believe, was to perform a test pit or percolation test on site, which we did.
I saw that, yeah.
And the information, the results that we got support what our design required. I mean, it actually is a factor of safety of both three, so we used, I think, a 10-minute per inch design rate. The actual was three minutes per inch, so it's about three times faster than what we designed. So we really don't think there's going to be an issue with the stormwater. Right now, the site is maybe 80 percent impervious, and there's no stormwater controls on the site, so everything just kind of, you know, melts and...
Surface drainage, as they call it, yeah.
It goes right onto North Street. So there will be an improvement to that with the greenscape and with the retention basin we're putting on site.
Right, right, okay. All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have no further questions. The only question I had was, you know, the gate and the fire department, so the only concerns I have. And if we could get approval from the fire department, I have no concerns at all, so... Wish to wish the board for the site plan approval, or...
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the following conditions: that the applicant receive a final sign-off from DPD regarding the landscaping plan and the, subject to final approval by the fire department regarding the gate on North Street and regarding the circulation of the site for emergency vehicles, and final approval from the city's wastewater department regarding stormwater drainage on the site.
I'll second the motion. Made by Mr. Vichet, seconded by Mr. Lockhart. Alvin Faber, say aye.
Aye.
Chair vote, cheers. Any members voting against? No? So you approve, good luck, wish you well.
Thank you.
Good luck with your project, sir.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. The next matter will be Trotting Park Road.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board.
Mr. Dean Nelson, hold on.
Oh, sir.
Special permit for 256 Trotting Park Road. An application was submitted by Lenny De Souza seeking a special permit to construct a new single-family home at the above address. The parcel is located in suburban neighborhood, single-family zoning district, and requires a special permit from the planning board under section 5.110 for minimum lot width and for any relief that was requested by the zoning. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, good evening, Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Matt Hammer with Lamplex Engineering and Surveying here in Lowell, 10 George Street. And we're here this evening seeking a special permit essentially for the lot here, which was left, was remaining from a lot line adjustment we did on this rear parcel in order to get a, an order of conditions that was issued by the Conservation Commission and a variance that was issued for frontage from the zoning board of appeals. So this property right here is 256 Trotting Park Road. Lenny De Souza, who's here with us this evening, his family currently lives in this single-family house here. He's proposing to construct another single-family house in the rear. But what happened here is as long as, by moving that lot line from here down to here, it essentially left a lot that was not an existing parcel, and because it didn't have the proper lot width, we were going to, in order to fulfill the requirements for lot width, we would need a special permit from the planning board. For this existing dwelling in this newly created lot, we didn't change anything on the lot width, it was just the depth of the lot changed. So because we altered that lot line, we would need to seek that special permit from the planning board. I can say, at the Conservation Commission, the project was unanimously approved for this driveway and the single-family ingrading here, and it was unanimously approved by the zoning board of appeals for the existing lot width, the frontage, which was 25 feet, where 90 feet is required. In this district, or on this road, the, trying to find it. Just to give you a little update as to what happened through the zoning board of appeals, all these lots were created in the rear along Trotting Park Road, and all of the other lots have homes on it, but none of the other lots were required to be granted a variance from the zoning board of appeals. They were all issued building permits through the building department without needing to go to the zoning board of appeals. So because ours was similar in nature to all the other lots that are currently constructed on, that was one of the primary reasons we were able to be granted the variance from the zoning board of appeals. So I can go through all the items required for issuance of the special permit if the board wants me to?
Sure, if you would please, sure.
We feel as though this application does meet the, adhere to the goals of the City of Lowell Comprehensive Master Plan, and successful projects should present specific connections between the goals of the master plan and the projects themselves. And we feel as though that the proposed use to construct a single-family structure, which would be consistent with the homes in the immediate neighborhood, and it has and will accommodate parking for each home, is consistent with the goals of the master plan. The unique character of each of the Lowell neighborhoods should be preserved and enhanced. Again, we feel as though we're currently in a suburban, single-family, an SSF zoning district in its neighborhood, in the surrounding, single-family homes is consistent with this proposed use, scale the development, and ensures the continued consistency of the architectural and scale of the surrounding neighborhood. This is the proposed dwelling here, which is very consistent with the homes along Trotting Park Road, which are essentially split ranches primarily, or they're small colonials. And I should say that the zoning board of appeals approved of this design as well during their purview of the project. Public safety shall be maintained and improved as a prerequisite for protecting the viability and desirability of the Lowell neighborhoods. This project has proposed access from Trotting Park Road. We're going to have a private driveway to service the rear dwelling, and the project will be improved with public safety because it has its own separate driveway and a garage and can accommodate its own parking within the property. Lowell public schools must be maintained and improved as a prerequisite for protecting the viability and desirability of Lowell neighborhoods. We're utilizing the existing property for a single-family dwelling, which will provide taxes, which will support allocations for school improvements through those taxes for this use. And the project is currently along an existing roadway, which is currently served by the school bus transit system, and will not require additional bus trips. Limit the infill development to the project that are sensitive to the context of the existing neighborhood. The proposed project will develop the existing property within the boundaries, will be facilitated with all the existing utilities within the property itself, and will also be, provide landscaped areas to further enhance the surrounding neighborhood. During the Conservation Commission discussions, there are some ornamental trees in the rear of the property. We told the Conservation Commission, we feel as though we're going to be able to save six of the eight trees that were currently planted by Mr. De Souza, so it's not like we're going in and taking down a wooded area. We're going to be maintaining some of the existing trees in the rear. And that was a condition of, order of conditions that was issued by the Lowell Conservation Commission. Protect larger areas of contiguous open space and natural areas where the development pressures on green areas threatened by existing neighborhood character. This project is consistent with the typical landscaping elements in the surrounding area and the single-family homes in and around the area. You can also see that this whole rear area will be protected in the back, and we're not encroaching closer than the required 50-foot setback that are, is currently a limit that the conservation is trying to adhere for the project. Utilize waterways and waterfront open spaces as focal points for neighborhood activity and character for, by enhancing public access and recreational opportunities. We feel as though this requirement wouldn't necessarily apply just because it's a benign use as up for a single-family home in this case. Increase civil engagement and participation among Lowell residents to improve neighborhoods' stability and protect neighborhood character. Again, the development is a single-family dwelling. We believe that this development is consistent with the overall neighborhood character. And civic engagement in the residential dwelling unit has public access to the street itself. Enhance waterfront access and recreational amenities. Again, we feel as though this requirement does not necessarily apply because of the relatively benign nature of a proposed, single-family development. Efforts should be made to protect the remaining parcels of wetlands and prevent further encroachment. Again, we did receive an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. We're proposing to put a proposed erosion and sedimentation control barrier in the rear in order to protect the wetlands in the rear of the property. We're also incorporating some drainage along the side here and the end of the driveway as well. Help to increase employment opportunities for all residents by helping people improve their skills and abilities. This project will seek to utilize local tradesmen, realtors, professionals, and maintenance companies to increase the localized employment opportunities for this project. Improve the understanding of sustainable technologies in the application to Lowell's unique constraints and opportunities among local businesses, residents, and government. We are incorporating runoff into this drainage area and using an infiltration trench system at the end of the driveway, which does boost the public's awareness of the surrounding neighborhood of sustainable stormwater management practices. Under neighborhood character, how does this project protect and enhance the character of the existing neighborhood? Successful projects should reflect the density, the urban design, the setbacks, height, and landscaping elements of the surrounding buildings. The proposed project will utilize the existing... The proposed project will utilize the existing residential architectural designs along Trotting Park Road. And with this, we've created this design here, which we feel as though is acceptable to the neighborhood. And this project will also be serviced by its own garage and open-air parking. We feel as though this project will be -- enhance the neighborhood character. How does the project provide social, economical, and community needs? The project provides a home to service a family use, employment opportunities during construction and maintenance, thereby approving the future social, economic, and community prospects of the city and its citizens. Is the project consistent with the character, materials, and scale of the building in the vicinity? We feel as though it is. The proposed project is proposing a two-and-a-half-story building and architectural elements, which will be consistent with the size of the surrounding neighborhood. We feel as though this is a very modest home for this neighborhood. Does the project minimize the visual intrusion from visible parking, storage, and outdoor service areas viewed from public ways and abutting residences? Yes, we believe it does. This driveway in the house is set back from behind the existing house. And when you're down on Trotting Park Road, it's going to have little to no visible deterrence from the existing roadway. Also, we'll be utilizing the individual trash bins, which will be brought to the end of the street. That was noted in Jared Elv's comments. And they'll bring the trash bins down to the end of the driveway for the trash pickup. And those trash units will be located within the garage itself. Does the project have any negative impacts on the natural environment? We feel as though this project will not have any negative impacts. And by virtue of us receiving an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, we feel as though that that further substantiates that requirement. Does the project minimize the volume of cut and fill and the extent of stormwater flow and erosion -- soil erosion from the project site? Projects must meet the standards of Mass DEP's Stormwater Policy Handbook. And again, we're providing drainage along the end and the side. We have an erosion and sedimentation control barrier, as well as a proposed temporary sedimentation basin, which is located here as well. Does the project minimize the contamination of groundwater? We feel as though yes, by those same elements that I just discussed related to the stormwater. And by having this infiltration trench increases the groundwater recharge to the groundwater Does the project minimize -- well, again, the next one is, does the proposed project consistent with the stormwater regulations in the city? Again, it's the same. Infiltration trench and protection of the wetlands is consistent with that requirement. Does the project incorporate minimal directional lighting beneath the entranceway in the rear of the -- does the project minimize lighting glare on abutting properties? And we will have lighting on the front entranceway, which is a pretty decent distance from the home that's over here. And in the garage, there'll be a -- just a motion detecting -- I'm sure there'll be a motion detection light on the garage that'll just go on and off when the car's coming in and out of the garage. Traffic access and safety. How does the project address traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading? Does the project provide adequate parking visitors? Will the project impact the area with significant on-street parking demand? Will the project require the loss of on-street public parking for driveway curb cuts? Trotting Park Road currently does not have street parking. Just about everybody has their own driveway and garage. We're providing all of our own parking within the site that can accommodate two parking spaces. And we feel as though it will not affect the traffic flow in the current parking on Trotting Park Road, which, like I said, they do not have public parking on Trotting Park Road. Does the project provide adequate access to each structure for fire and service equipment and adequate utilities? We do have a driveway here. We feel as though it's -- has suitable access to the house, similar to the other homes on the street. And it's just going to be similar to just about every home that's set back in the rear along Trotting Park. And to my knowledge, there hasn't been an issue to date on that, or a comment from the Fire Department related to that. Does the project provide adequate and safe pedestrian and vehicle access throughout and around the project? Again, we have a driveway. It's got suitable access. In order to get out of the driveway, we provide a little turn back, you know, an area for someone to back up a vehicle so they can get in and out of the garage with this little configuration here. And we feel as though that requirement is met. Pedestrians will just walk down the driveway or on the shoulder. Are there any substantial impacts on public services and utilities? We feel as though there is not. We have water, we have sewer, we have gas, and we have the suitable utilities out in Trotting Park Road to support the single-family dwelling. Does the project have any negative fiscal impacts on the city, including impacts on city services, schools, tax base, and employment? We feel as though the project will not have a negative impact on the city. It will provide additional housing, employment, and taxes to the city itself. And finally, does the project fully comply with the zoning ordinance, including parking, signage, landscaping, open space requirements, curb cut lengths, and driveway whis? Again, we -- this dwelling, in the existing dwelling, is going to -- this dwelling is not going to change at all. We're not making this lot any more non-conforming than it is. And that we feel as though that there's ample parking for both lots. And it already has a significant amount of landscaping around this property. And we feel as though it's going to meet that requirement. It just doesn't meet it because we adjusted that rear lot line. I can open it up to the Board.
Thank you, sir. At this point in time, anybody here like to speak in favor of this project? Anybody in favor? In favor? In favor? Anybody like to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Yes, just come to the microphone, please, and give us your name and address, and you can ask the question, okay?
Can I ask?
Sure, just give us your name and address first.
266 Trotting Park Road, right next to the premises. Can I ask, the right way will be on the left side of the current house or right side?
If you're facing the house from the street, it'll be on the left side.
On the left side?
Yeah.
And so then the back of the house, we're facing 266 Trotting Park Road, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. So I'm speaking for my parents. We actually -- it's hard to speak it out because I don't want to interrupt your project or something like that. We are neighbor, we want to be good neighbor together. But it's a little sad that I feel like the new house will -- we changed the view of the -- the back view of the entire neighborhood. So I really enjoy the natural view of my parents' house. I've been there many times too because they're living alone. I just feel sad about that. But I really don't want to interrupt the project, and that the only thing that we're concerned, because that's very close to our house. So we -- my parents and I debate a lot if we should be speaking this out, but I think I should tell them this. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
I can say that the entire rear part of the property here is going to remain untouched. So when they look out the back, there'll be nothing on the back of your parents' property.
Because that's --
They're right here.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, there's a -- we're developing here.
Correct, yep.
But all of this will remain open.
Because you have -- what's the wetlands, the yellow?
Yep, the wetlands here, but we're not doing anything back here.
So just be over to the left of here, but straight back would be all the same view.
Yep.
Would not change.
I think, as I understand the -- your -- like your projects, the current house lot is like straight like this, and in the back is like wrapped around the back of my parents' house.
Right.
So I understand what you're talking about. However, the new house is just right next to their backyard. So the back of the house will be -- we're just like -- just facing right to our backyard. So I feel it's so close, and I just like the natural view of that, so, yeah.
We understand.
Yeah.
When you used to see it wide open, you get used to seeing it wide open.
Yeah, that'd look better, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else want to speak at all? Just want to turn it over to any Board members who have any questions?
Clarification.
Sure, Mr. Lockhart.
This print, Mark, you passed out this evening.
Here's a question on the print you gave us tonight, Matt.
Yeah.
The new drive.
Over here on the zoning, just need a clarification. Under the frontage.
Yes.
You have 90 feet required.
Yep.
Property 12B is 75 feet, which is clear. And it's a 16B where you're showing 25 feet.
Mm-hmm.
Is that a dimension that's identified on this print? And where is that? Is that?
Yeah, it's actually 20.01 plus five feet.
Right there.
Yeah.
It's a little confusing on this print.
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's what I thought. I just needed that clarification. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
So when we had made the filing as well, I thought because I was altering this lot line, that on this lot here, because you can go from -- you can do a 15-foot reduction in frontage by special permit, which would be 90 minus 15 would be 75, that we had the 75.
Okay.
And that this would require the special permit. I was told by -- correct me if I'm wrong, Christine, on this, but I was told by Patrick Burns that that wouldn't necessarily be the case, in his opinion, on that. But that was -- that's essentially why I originally thought I was coming here, was for that. But I felt as though it was important to still discuss the entire project.
Anything else, Mr. Lockhart?
No, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Geis, any questions?
I have no questions.
I have no questions at this time.
Mr. Snesky? Mr. Malowich?
Done, thank you.
Mr. Vischer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just --
God bless you.
God bless him. Christine, is -- so I'm just reading the comments here. Do they have to go to the ZBA for a variance?
They did.
They did?
They did.
Okay.
Matt, you said you got the variance from the ZBA, right? I'm sorry?
Yes, we did.
So they're in front of the planning board tonight for a lot with special permit because they don't have 80% of the required frontage for the new lot.
The new lot being?
Where the house is in the back, the green.
Right, okay.
So because the driveway going in, it means they don't have the frontage on Trotting Park.
Correct.
So the driveway is only so wide, doesn't give them the frontage. So they're here for us on this special permit because of their frontage on Trotting Park Road isn't enough.
And the variance that they were seeking was for which lot, then?
This one.
That one.
The bad lot, okay.
So for us, this is special permit is basically because you don't have the frontage, enough frontage on Trotting Park Road because of the way your driveway goes in, it's not wide enough.
And then the ZBA would have taken into account how that house sits on the lot.
Correct.
Right. And that would have been -- and I'm sorry, did you appear before the young lady that spoke? Did you appear before the Zoning Board of Appeals to -- did you go before the Zoning Board of Appeals to tell them your concerns? No?
Okay. And I can say Dennis McCarthy, who is an architect, did go through the architectural elements
Right.
of the building itself. We discussed landscaping.
Because that's where the appropriate for some sort of screening for?
Right. And sometimes we would go in front of the planning board first.
Right.
But we felt as though the variance was more of a critical issue.
Right.
And then that's why we actually went to Conservation first, because we thought that the Conservation permit was important before we went to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
And did the ZBA condition any kind of screening in the rear of that home for the --
All we said were, these trees in here, we can leave. The stone wall will remain. It's actually -- happens to be just on the abutting property, even though it's a wall, I believe, that Mr. D'Souza had constructed.
Mm-hmm.
So all that'll stay.
Yep.
And we did not receive any negative comments at either public hearing proceeding with the Conservation Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Because conceptually, I just -- I have a real problem with these types of lots. The -- I think the only thing that makes this worth consideration is that, you know, we're talking about an acre and a half approximately, and there is at least three to four other lots with homes on them on Trotting Park.
There's seven.
Are there seven?
Yeah.
Okay, so three I could easily see with the -- so seven of them. And it goes back to, you know?
Seventies.
Yeah, they -- one, two, three, four. They identified it four here, but through the seventies, and it's kind of like Frieda Lane, you know, a new subdivision, and they got shared driveways and houses behind. Poorly done. Doesn't mean we have to replicate that, but if we take into account neighborhood character, if these were smaller lots in a tighter neighborhood, I certainly would have an issue with this. But again, we're talking approximately an acre and a half. I do believe that that is going to be, you know, certainly from the street perspective, you're not even going to see that home back there. I certainly understand the neighbors. I mean, you're in a suburban, single-family zone, and now all of a sudden, the backyard of a home is facing sideways to your lot. I mean, just think about that. Anybody sitting in this room where you live, just think about that for a second. So obviously, that's something I, like I said, and then what's unique with this is the other houses that were developed, if you look at the lots, you don't have that jet out like you've done here to get further away from the wetlands. So they are...
They're even further back.
They're further back.
Yeah.
Right, right. So although we're preserving the kind of the view, or we don't have anything directly behind them, I'll be honest with you, I don't think you would have been able to put a house directly behind them. That was the reason for jetting this out, to be further away from the wetlands.
That's correct.
To accommodate that.
The building needed to be the 50 feet away from the wetland edge, and our building, 68.
Right. Otherwise, that wouldn't have been developed
Right.
without that.
And this development is essentially developing in an area that's already disturbed.
It may be stretching the boundary here. Is there any way we can increase the screening at the rear of that home?
Yeah, we could provide a couple more plantings along this side here, as long as -- the problem is, is this is the southerly-facing side.
Yep.
So the sun's...
The sun's on the other side of it.
No, it's going across this way.
Right.
And, you know, it's not going to get the best light coming from this side.
Right.
It'll get some coming in We told the boards that we would try to protect them to the extent practicable. But this 24-inch tree will definitely have to be removed, it's going to be too close to the foundation.
Right, right.
But I don't think Mr. D'Souza would have any problem planting a couple other trees along here if that would help with the, with the abutting property.
I mean, I would, I would like to incorporate that as a, as a condition of this approval. Sure. Is that the, and that, that screening through plantings must, held in perpetuity. I mean, it has to be part of the, you know, part of the process. It can't be in a year they cut them down, or two years from now they get cut down. I mean, it does no good, it really doesn't do any good.
The one thing I think that works in your favor, remember, Vichette, is that I believe where the tree, the additional vegetation you want to be planted will require a permit from the conservation commission in the future to take down because it is within 100 feet of a wetland.
Okay.
So...
All right.
We do have that catch.
Okay.
The beginning of the property, or the front of the new house, might be a little bit out of 100, but the back of the house is at 68 feet, and the concom jurisdiction is 100 from the edge of the wetland, so...
So, and if they took them down illegally, then...
We would have enforcement.
Enforcement, and then, yeah.
Steps that we could take.
And there is an existing stone wall, Mark?
Yes, there is. Matt.
That is on the abutters property, is that correct? Yeah, and that doesn't provide much screening, though.
That's...
Yeah. All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I only have one question. I mean, I know it looks like back in, on our comments, where you see the lease, there were six irregular-shaped lots which would have been the single-family zoning district with a minimum of 75 foot, lot width. Six lots did not meet the common dimensional requirements. No record is available to indicate the board's reasoning. However, these homes have been there since, but they're built in, what, 298 was 180, 302 was 180, 324 was 179, and 326 was 180, and their all frontage was 27 feet, 24, 26, 25. So they're pretty consistent. I can tell you, I wasn't on the board back in 1980, but I was on shortly after. I could tell you who was on the board then, I could tell you who chairman was, and I could name all five of the board members before I came on four years later, but, so and it says they have no reasoning from the planning board, but unfortunately, I was in there then, so I can't add any more to that part of it. But due to the, I don't have a problem with the special permit due to the fact that, like you say, you met the requirements with the ZBA, you met the requirements with the conservation commission. So, I just have two quick questions here. So you said from the driveway going in, there'd be no parking on the driveway, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, obviously, you feel there's no problem with the fire department getting their truck down that roadway?
Well, it's not, you know, an ambulance can get up there.
Yeah.
Okay, but it's not designed to take a, you know...
Big fire truck.
Yeah, yeah, so, but a truck can definitely get in there. You know, typical trucks, eight to 10 feet wide. This is a 12-foot driveway. You know, there'll probably be a one-to-two-foot shoulder on either side, like typical driveways. And it's not greater than the 200 feet, which becomes an issue related to 200 feet.
Distance.
Yeah. But it is consistent with the other driveways.
Yeah.
Along the roadway.
Yeah.
And I can say that those lots did not go through the zoning board of appeals. They just were issued straight building permits.
I have no further questions. Any of the board members have any further comments? If not, we requested a board, so we're looking for the special permit for the required frontage, right?
Yeah.
Lot width.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the special permit with the condition that the applicant worked with the Department of Planning and Development on the screening in back of the new home. That's all.
Mr. Chairman, can we just, if the maker would not mind strengthening that a little bit, that the, that they work with DPD for, for DPD to finalize the, a screening plan for, for the rear of the, of the property, abutting lot 266. So if there is an issue, they could come back to us for some resolution.
If the maker would have no problem with this. You okay with the maker there?
That's fine.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor that was amended. We have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Malowich second it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the special permit is approved. Good luck, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome. And moving along on the agenda, next, Matt, this is a special permit for 36 Osgood Street. An application was submitted by the Daly Group seeking a special permit approval for the property located at 36 Osgood Street in the traditional two-family zoning district. The proposed project is to construct a two-family dwelling on the subject property and requires special permit approval under section 5.110 for lot width of the zoning ordinance. And any relief that is requested thereof, will we hear from the applicant, please?
Also, architecturals, I don't know if we have architecturals.
Oh, I think we have some, okay. What would they go with?
We do, we have them.
We do have some, okay.
Yeah.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. Again, for the record, my name is Matt Hammer with Lamplex Engineering Surveying at 10 George Street in Lowell. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Daly Group located on Stedman Street in Lowell. Here tonight with me is also Mr. David Daly is here as well. He's the developer and the one who's going to be building the homes on Osgood Street. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of history of the property itself. I don't know if you recall, about a year ago, we did a, an approval not required subdivision on the parcel. For this parcel here, which essentially took off this rear part of the property in order to accommodate for all these sheds and deck and patio areas out behind the existing building. So we created this lot line adjustment here, which essentially created the lot 2B, which is 8,990 square feet, which has frontage, 100 feet of frontage on Osgood Street. So here's the parcel here. The grading on the property goes in this direction, towards the subutter right now. The, like I said, it has 8,990 square feet, and we're here seeking a special permit for lot width because we don't meet the minimum lot width requirement for 90, for 80% of the total area required to have two units on a single parcel. Okay? So where the parcel has the total area that meets the requirement per dwelling unit, we're now just talking about lot width. So the intent of us this evening is to show how the proposed dwelling and the, and the parking needed for the dwellings can fit within the lot, even though it doesn't meet that lot width requirement. So we are proposing a two duplex dwelling. Dwelling unit is 20 by 25. Each unit will have a 14-foot-wide garage here, and then identical on the other side We have elevations showing the front elevation from the street, and this is one unit, and this is the other unit. We're going to have a 12-foot-wide driveway with an infiltration trench along the perimeter of the driveway, and the driveway will come in, provide access to each garage, and a way for each vehicle to exit, and we're going to provide the other two spaces that would be required to meet the two spaces per dwelling unit, and then we'll have three additional spaces for any visitors. So we'll have excess in the amount of parking that would be required for these two dwelling The drainage will continue in the same direction, but what we'll do is we'll intercept that drainage with this infiltration trench, so there'll no longer be drainage going on to the adjacent properties from the development. We're going to leave the rear here as green space, so we have ample amount of green space back here, and there's green space along this subutter here, and the building itself will meet all the zoning requirements for setbacks. This is an elevation here of the rear of the property. Here is the garages in the back of the building, and then these are the left and the right side elevation on either side. Does the board want me to go through the, all the elements for the requirements of the special permit?
Those you listed in your narrative, right?
That's correct.
Okay. No, I think we're, I'm well set on those then.
Yeah. I know I can be a little long-winded, Chairman. I also have Mr. Daly here this evening, who'd like to say a couple words as well.
Okay. The only other thing we want to ask you to do is later, if you could just comment on the comments that we got from the staff.
Sure.
If you want to do those before Mr. Daly or after, that's fine with me, either way, if you wanted to see Matt, that's fine.
Yes, so we got the, the comments from this, oh, excuse me, go ahead, David.
I just want to say good evening to the board. This is a pleasure to be before you tonight, David Daly, 229 Stedman Street, the Daly Group. This is currently a vacant parcel in an area that has a number of two families on that street, actually some in similar size and character. So when we design this project, we design it around the neighborhood. So not only did we design a house that architecturally looks good and fits the character of the area, most importantly, and especially, I think, in the Highlands in this area, we added additional parking, which is a key element to this area. And so obviously, we're not going to overcrowd the, this, the street anymore, although it's not a major problem right now, there is obviously always parking issues in this, this part of the city. So we, we made sure to address that. Additionally, we also made sure to address any of the stormwater management, and almost as importantly as you can see, we provided for a number of, large area of green space in the area for the project as well. So obviously, we do a lot of stuff in the city, and we're proud to do stuff here in the city, and we look forward to any questions or comments you might have of the abutters. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, on July 10th, is that the comment we have from Patrick?
Yes, that's correct. So when I look at the comments here, I'm going to jump to item 5, I believe, because the others, the first four comments are just general comments.
Yeah, just knowledge of the...
Yeah. So, you know, the height...
So number four, he said, what was that, the front wall of the proposed, can you start with that one? It's consistent with the setback, okay. So does, so where's the, so you're going to have a wall, can you show us that wall?
They're just saying that the average setback here is...
He says the front wall of the proposed...
Yeah, the front wall is this wall here.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, okay, thank you, go ahead, okay, I got you.
And what that did, it's good you actually brought that up, Chairman. Bringing that up allowed us to push the building closer to the roadway a little bit, and allowed us a little bit more in the back to free things up in the rear. So under 5A, talks about the mean level of the highest cable on the roof. We'll make sure that this roof line meets that requirement. I think that's all, Ms. Elves, is, who wrote these comments? Excuse me, Mr. Burns had made note, this building will comply with the average height requirements in the, in, in this district, per the building codes. B, talks about a half-story, so essentially, a half-story is a percentage of that space in the attic area can be no more than 80% of the floor beneath it. So we'll make sure that that complies with that requirement in order to show that that will meet the requirement. Mr. Jajokis, who is the architect, is well aware of that requirement. The dormers add a little bit of architectural texture to the building, but again, that attic space will not exceed that 80% requirement. And again, related to that same requirement, he's just saying that any area that's over an elevation of five feet in height needs to be included in that calculation, and we're well aware of that as well. Engineering had a comment about a section of granite curbing out in the roadway that's going to be, that's going to be missing, and when we take this curbing out, we'll be under the direction of the engineering department to replace that curbing relative to that comment from engineering.
Matt, I think we have two further comments on the back of that page.
Yep.
I don't know if you have those, if you could address those as well.
Yes, I will.
The building department and what, thank you.
Yes. So there was a comment related to the floor plans.
Okay.
in the, in, in this district per the building codes. B, it talks about a half-story. So essentially, a half-story is a percentage of that space in the attic area can be no more than 80 percent of the floor beneath it. So we'll make sure that that complies with that requirement in order to show that that will meet the requirement. Mr. Giachakis, who is the architect, is well aware of that requirement. The dormers add a little bit of architectural texture to the building, but again, that attic space will not exceed that 80 percent requirement. And again, related to that same requirement, he's just saying that any area that's over an elevation of five feet in height needs to be included in that calculation, and we're well aware of that as well. Engineering had a comment about a section of granite curbing out in the roadway that's gonna be, that's gonna be missing. And when we take this curbing out, we'll be under the direction of the engineering department to replace that curbing relative to that comment from engineering.
Matt, I think we have two further comments on the back of that page. I don't know if you have those, if you could address those as well.
Yes, I will.
The building department and what, thank you.
Yes. So there was a comment related to the floor plans. So unbeknownst to me, if you're looking at this building from the roadway, this is the, these are the rear garage doors. For a secondary means of egress, there's a side landing here that comes out the side of each side, okay? And the comment was made that it's gonna be relatively close to the driveway. So on our site plan, where we have five feet here, and on this landing will be 40 inches, which is just below four feet, we're essentially gonna have 1.2 feet between that landing and the driveway. It occurred to me that, you know, that is a secondary means of egress and is relatively close to this driveway. I had an idea that we could put a tree on either side of the, the landing that comes out that would prevent a vehicle from hitting the landing itself if they went off the driveway. But again, there's still gonna be a foot and a half from the driveway, 1.2, not a foot and a half, 1.2 feet from the driveway edge to that landing.
Matt, on the landing, when you come out onto that landing, where do the stairs come?
They go, they go.
To the rear?
They go to the rear. Yeah. So, you know, there'll be, you know, a, you know, a four-by-four pressure-treated posts. It's not like this landing's high up in the air. It's just gonna be a few feet above the existing ground. We had an idea we could put a couple bollards there, but that's not gonna necessarily look that great. But we were thinking we could put a couple small trees to accent either side of it, and that would deter or prevent a vehicle from hitting that. Emergency egress, it's not like that egress is gonna be utilized that often. The people that live in this unit are more likely to come out through the garage, and they're more likely to come out the front door. Otherwise, if that wasn't the case, we'd just have to put it out the rear, and we'd have to reconfigure the entire kitchen, essentially, in order to accommodate that comment. But I should say that it's not that it doesn't meet the code for that egress, it's just a comment that was made, and it's duly noted. But we feel as though it's not gonna affect the driveway. I feel, also feels as though we're gonna have relatively low traffic on this access drive. It's just for two units. I could see if you had like eight, or 10, or 12 units, there'd be a lot more traffic. There might more likely be an occurrence with that egress landing. But we feel as though because it's just two units, low amount of vehicles that are gonna be on that driveway, that we'll be able to accommodate that, that egress the way that And that was the comment on that second page.
Okay. But the way, so one lady said they wanna meet with you after the discussion.
Yeah, I'm actually meeting with them tomorrow.
Okay, nice.
I briefly saw them last week. It didn't seem as though there was gonna be a big concern, but whatever they say we have to do back here for drainage, we're gonna do.
Okay. At this point in time, you all set, Matt? Anybody here this evening wanna speak in favor of this project?
Hello, my name is Sandra McNamara. As a retired inspector for the City of Lowell, I just wanna say the many years I worked here, it was always a pleasure when we heard of any daily projects that were being done. They take everything personal, and they're just nice. I haven't come across a bad one, so, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Anybody here like to speak in opposition? Grab the microphone, please, sir, first, take your name and address.
Good evening, how you doing? I'm Scott Barlow, I live at 22 Osgood Street. Apologize for coming in looking like a bum, but I rushed to get here. I've been on Osgood Street since the 60s. It's changed a bit since then. It's very congested, and it's become a bit of a speedway with people flying up and down. There's not too many two-car families. There's many cars on the street, and there's no parking for the ones that are there now. That whole area that is a vacant lot at this point is full of cars being parked there at all times. During the winter, it's, it's an issue with parking and where to put cars, and it's, it's not very pleasant to look at right now because it's not very well-kept. It was well-kept at one time. But having it even more congested with more cars and more, more property isn't appealing, especially the parking. I mean, I don't know where all these people that are parking there now plan to park. You know, you're talking a good four cars.
I mean, they shouldn't be there to begin with, so, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you're basically trespassing. I mean, go ahead. I mean, he needs four parking spaces, and he has them, so go ahead.
The parking is the biggest issue, you know, and the congestion, you know? I understand that if you own a property, I suppose you're entitled to do what other people have done with their property as well, but as far as how I feel about it, I'm not feeling very good about it. The only thing that did sound appealing was the trees. You know, a couple more trees on the street would be nice, you know? That, that I'd like to see. But, you know, I haven't heard anything that makes me feel comfortable about it, except maybe the, the fact that there'd be new property on the street as opposed to rundown property. But just trying to feel comfortable with the whole thing is, it's an adjustment, you know?
Yeah, I understand.
So that's, that's pretty much it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in opposition?
Hi, my name is Mary Micho. I live at 25 Osgood Street, and there was no way anybody else can park in that street. We have a couple of pitches with us. Huh? Can't find them? And there, when we left the house tonight, there were six or seven cars parked where they wanna put that, those houses. I don't know if it's one house or two houses, I don't understand it.
It's a duplex, so there's two houses in one unit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Where they put the sign, it's hard for anybody to see. My neighbor here didn't even know it was there. And the reason why I have her here with me now is because I have a concussion and I'm deaf, so that's why I have her standing there with me. But I showed it to her, she going over today and looked at the, we don't even understand it, to be truthful with you. The people that own that property were the cleanest people. You should see the place now, it looks like a jungle, it's disgusting. And it's never been like that. Now, that lady ever saw that now, forget it. I can't believe it. There is, on my side of the street, there's enough, we have, I have a three-family house.
A what family?
A three-family house. And I have four cars in my yard, and I have a permit for front. On my side of the street, I think there's like four houses that don't even have a parking in the yard, and the rest of them do, they have good-sized yards, you know? And the other side of the street that he wants to put that house, most of them don't have park, that much parking to park their cars. They have a small driveway, and some of them don't even have it. I think there's two big ones like the size of mine. I even have a built-in pool in the back of my yard, but it's, they go four, four cars. I have a three-family. That's all I have to say. Here's Judy.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Judy Kephardt, and I live at 17 Osgood Street. Basically, I have the same concerns. You drive down our street at night, and there isn't a vacant place, including in front of that vacant lot. Cars are parked there? I mean, okay, they have a garage, but what if, most families have two cars these days, if not three. So where are they gonna put all these cars?
Matt, you wanna explain the parking again? They have more parking than they're requested to have.
That place is not big at all.
Matt, could you just go over the parking for them, if you would? So basically, they need four, four parking spaces.
Right.
Four per unit, okay? Go ahead, I'll let you go.
Their front door's gonna be on Osgood Street, their door's gonna be on Osgood Street?
The front doors will face Osgood.
Osgood Street, and it's right on the sidewalk, right?
That's correct.
And what do you think, why aren't they gonna park in front of their property?
Go ahead.
Can we answer that, please? Instead of pulling around, how are they gonna get into the garages? Answer that, and is that from School Street?
Nope. He already explained that earlier.
I'm sorry?
He explained that earlier when he gave his presentation.
I'm deaf, I can't hear him, I couldn't hear him.
He already explained that to us earlier. He's gonna, he's gonna go in the driveway. Matt, you know where you're going in? They're coming in off the street, one driveway. Driveway goes up like that, it turns, the cars pull in, they go into the two garages, okay? So those cars are coming off the street, going behind the house, and coming around, and coming into the two garages.
On Osg, from Osgood Street?
Oh, the driveway's going off of Osgood.
Yeah, on Osgood Street, right?
Yes.
They go in the driveway, they go behind the two houses, come around the back, and they pull into the driveways. To the left over there, Matt, if you show them up top, how many parking spaces you have there?
We're gonna have five.
There are so many trees in that backyard, one of them must be 80 feet tall.
But I'm saying, we're getting back to your first question about the parking, okay?
Okay, I'm sorry.
You asked how many parking they have. So all they need is four, all off-street. So they're having more than four off-street parking spaces. Our code says they need four, okay? So they have, they're coming in the driveway, they're gonna go a mound and pack, park behind the houses, the one big unit, it's gonna be one unit. It's a duplex. House here, house here, two garages in the middle. They go in the street, turn around, and they, show my, and they park there. For additional parking in the way back of the lot, he has five spaces.
Five spaces.
So he has a total of seven. He needs four. So he has enough to take seven cars and put them off the street, which would be the four they need for their duplex, and then the additional one in case if they have any visitors. So they're taking care of their own parking and any visitors that might come to visit that one building.
Huh?
I missed that one.
Yeah. So I mean, what they're trying to do, what Mr. Daly said was, we're trying, they know there's a parking problem up there. And they're trying to get as many cars off the street as possible. So by doing that, they added all the additional parking.
Yeah, because we do get a lot of people that are parked there from the restaurant up a couple square. When they have weddings.
Yeah.
They pull on Osgood Street.
Yeah, yeah. But they won't be able to park in front of there now. I mean, actually, well, they're gonna have what? You have the driveway going, and then do you have sidewalks coming up the front?
Yes.
Yeah. So they couldn't block those areas, you know? So it would hopefully limit the people who've been parking in front of that lot to begin with now. So by putting that in there, right, because they can't park in front of the driveway, they can't park in front of the sidewalks, it will limit the amount of people who can park in front of the vacant lot. I'm sorry, Matt, go ahead.
And because they have their own driveways, it's more likely that if they're, you know, coming back from getting something from the store or something like that, that they're gonna come into their own driveway to unload their groceries and anything else that they would have. And personally, I think they're gonna wanna have their vehicles in their own garage and on their own property instead of leaving their cars out in the street.
It's actually safer insurance-wise.
Yeah, it's a little bit safer, yeah. Yeah, if anything happens to their vehicles on their property, it's probably covered. And maybe not so, depending on what happens out on Osgood.
Well, they're trying to meet the parking request. I mean, I understand it's congested up there. I was up there, I saw the sign, I parked there for a while, I walked the whole site. Last Monday morning at 10:35, I was there. And the, the sign was to the left of the project, pretty close to where the driveway's gonna be, yeah, right there.
Yeah. And I, and all you folks live on the other side of the street, is that correct?
Right.
So we got 23, 25, and 17, right?
Oh, you're on the same side, yeah.
So at least they.
You're over, another one down?
Yeah.
Couple, okay.
I'm sorry, do you have any other questions?
So I, I just would like to say that it's, it's less likely that if somebody was to park out on the street that they would park. They'd wanna favor that side of the street as opposed to the other side of the street, which you would think the properties on the other side of the street would wanna favor that parking.
Anybody, anybody else wanna speak in regards to the project? Anybody else?
The structure itself will be 9.1 feet.
Anybody else have any questions? If not, this time I'll turn over to any board members, have any questions? So the only thing here for us is a special permit, because you don't have the width in the back, they'll continue the same as the frontage, correct?
Yes, correct, Chairman.
Sure, you got the microphone, please, sir, because people watching us at home on TV think I'm talking to myself again. That's okay.
I'm curious, if everything is approved, when would the building start?
I can, we can ask that, Chairman, he'll answer that for us. Scott, can I answer that question? If you had approval, how long do you think it'll take you for you start?
Just trying to figure out what kind of a winter we'd be looking at.
So that we have to go through a 20-day appeal period, and we would be starting immediately after that. So we'll be starting within a month.
Okay.
We can start some of the.
You have a projected end date?
Yeah. How long it take the building, approximately, if you know Mr. Daly?
Yeah, so by next spring, they should be finished. They'll get the foundation, you know, they could be even finished before the end of the year, if everything goes well.
Okay. All right. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
So obviously, we knew, we were acutely aware of the parking issues in, in that area specifically. So we added, as you noted, the extra, we have three extra spots. So if there is a parking problem, people, street parking, we would probably push to get people to get street parking permits. If not, the big thing is that you can actually still park in front of the house. We can't, we can't stop them from doing that. There's a 12-foot access driveway you can't park in front of, but those cars can still park in there tonight, unfortunately, can still park there. And if, without the police enforcement, that we can't really do much about it. So it's really not gonna have a huge impact on the street, besides that 12-foot access to the driveway. Plus, taking that, that vacant abandoned lot and adding more parking to that for this duplex is, is a big bonus. That's all I'd like to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this point in time, I'm gonna turn over, any board members have any questions? Mr. Guy, I'll start with you if you don't mind, go this way.
I don't have any questions, but just a comment. I've been down Osgood, and this is one of the best case scenarios in regards to parking. You meet the four plus three additional spaces required by the city, so at this point, I'm very comfortable with the parking situation of the, of the proposed property.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lockhart?
I have no real problems with the project. I think it's good utilization of a lousy-looking lot. I do have one question here, though. I have a sheet on this June 15, 2018 landplex memo, doesn't have a page number, but it's Building Department comment, he's got the site plan and architectural plan, do not agree. He references rear bulkheads as shown on the site plan, but not the architectural plan.
Yes.
That comment, I just, you know, just.
Yeah, we apologize for that. That'll be corrected. All the plans will comply with the building codes, and we'll update a plot plan to the Department of Planning and Development as well.
Yeah, okay. That's all I have, Mr.
Mr. Vichette, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looking at the, at the proposal in, in walking the site, I think one of the biggest concerns, if you're gonna do any development, was having adequate parking. And as we've gone over extensively, not only do you meet the minimum parking, off-street parking, but you actually have additional parking. And as, as was noted, you're really not subtracting a lot of off, I mean, on-street parking as a result of the curb cut that's, that's on there. So you're not losing a lot of street capacity, and you're, you're actually adding extra, extra parking for this unit. I will say, I was surprised when I went down there, and the opposite. I, I will say, I was surprised when I went down there, on the opposite side of the street, I took some pictures, and there were no trees, and I do like the idea of, of some additional trees on the site, and Matt, I like the idea that you had for the landing, so, if we could include those additional...
Sure.
Trees, I think visually, you'd be able to still, you know, you'd see that from the, from the street, and I think it would add to the, to the site as well, so. However, you know, you're in a tight space, so I think you have to work with DPD as to what species would be the best to, for that site, but I think that that would, that would add. But fortunately, unfortunately, it really does meet the character of what's there.
Yeah.
You know, the setback is, it meets the, so when you look down that street, it's not going to stand out one way or the other, as far as, you know, being set back too far, or it's pretty much in line with the rest of the homes that are there, so, from that perspective. And just going over the requirements, you know, in, in the, in this district, you need a minimum of 6,000 square feet for the lot size, and you've got 8,990. The land area per dwelling unit, you need at least 4,000 square feet for each dwelling unit. You have two dwelling units, you have, so that would be 8,000 square feet, so you have 4,495 per dwelling unit. Frontage for all of the uses, multi-family, 80 feet, you have 100 feet. So, and, and the setback is really in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, the eight feet. You know, the usable open space per dwelling unit, the minimum is 500, you've got 801. For a neighborhood like that, that's actually a lot of usable open space per dwelling unit. And then, the clarification, obviously, DPD had concerns with, based on what was submitted regarding the two-and-a-half stories and the maximum height, which you've said you will comply with, and obviously make it conditional upon that. So, for the most part, you really do meet the zoning requirements, and you're providing additional parking, so it's just the, you know, the, the odd shape of the lot, but it's the odd shape of the lot, not as, as it affects the view from the street.
Right.
It's the rear of the lot, so, I, I'm, I'm fine with what you're proposing at this point, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Malavich?
Yeah, I have no real problems with the proposal. It's zero impact on, on the street parking. The only thing I see missing, and I don't know if the, it's maybe that unusual amount of open space is a substitute for, it is any decks off the house.
It's not gonna...
It just won't work, I don't think.
Right.
There's no room for it, so, we do have all that open space for...
Yeah.
People to use. All in all, I think it's an okay project.
Thank you.
Mr. Snetsky?
I, I agree, it's a good use of the space, it's, you know, an improvement for the neighborhood, and I think that the parking impact will be minimal. I mean, it's unfortunate that some people are gonna lose what they've been using as a, as a parking lot, but that's, you know, your property, you know, and which they've just been able to use up to this point, but it's developable property, and certainly should be, so I have no problem with this.
I'd like to even add, even if it was a single-family dwelling, it would still be the same curb cut.
Sure, yeah, just be the one driveway coming in.
You know, so...
Yeah, I mean, I'm glad to see you put the extra parking, and I really am, I think that really sells it. Any, any plans for the green space on the way back past the extra parking, or you have that big green area there? You have back there?
Just gonna leave it. As you know, Mr. Daly likes to landscape, so...
Sure, I understand.
I'm sure this, the surrounding property will look very nice when it's all completed.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, what's the wish, the wish of the board? So, we request for the special permit for the lot with and rear. Yes? Yep, come, the microphone, please, again? So, the request that they're, that they're asking us is to approve it, because the lot in the back isn't as wide as part of the lot in the front.
Okay.
That's what's in front of us.
All right. Well, since I've been sitting here digesting everything, I think I've, I've changed my opinion.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not against it, because it makes more sense that after there's a house there, there won't be all these cars parked in the road, so, I, I think it's actually gonna be in...
Can you show them what the house is gonna look like? Yeah, sometimes it cleans it up, but it better not have any...
I think that it will probably bring up the property value of my house.
Mm-hmm.
So...
What are your three doings down?
The only thing, I'm the second house to the left, if you're standing...
So, you're coming down the street? Yeah.
Yeah, 22.
Yeah.
I have a picture of your, I have a picture of your trees, 'cause you're one of the few trees that are up there.
Dead plant, dead.
So, you know we went up there.
There's, there's some concern as to whether it's gonna be rental property, or if it's gonna be owned.
These'll, these'll be owner-occupied.
Owner-occupied.
Yep.
Which is always nicer.
I think they're agreeing with me.
I mean, it's always nicer to have the owners there, 'cause...
Yep, makes sense, they'll, they'll take better care of their property.
That's it, yeah.
All right, I'm in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your input. Thank you. So, what's the request of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the, the special permit with the following conditions, that the applicant comply with the height requirement, the two-and-a-half stories maximum height of 35 feet, subject to final approval by wastewater management, and the applicant will provide appropriate tree plantings at the side of the house located near the landing for, both for aesthetics and for safety purposes, subject to final approval by DPD.
Motion made by Mr. Vichette, and second by Mr. Snetsky. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Nearing none? Chair votes yes. Motion does carry. Wish you well, good luck.
Thank you very much, everyone.
I hope we will clean up the area.
Oh, yeah.
Because when I pulled down there, I saw the traffic that you saw, you know, in front of the lot, so, now you can have a nice lot there, less people in there.
Yeah.
I mean, it's good that he put all the extra parking in the rear, really picks it up. That way, his, I mean, even his visitors can go in the rear, you know? Because everybody has visitors, you know, whether you have a function from family or something like that, you know? One's cleaning up.
Yeah, that's a wanna...
We'll hit you once.
Spoiler alert.
Matt, it was killing me, too.
So, gotta keep, gotta keep it peeing. That's what neighborhood associations do. Yeah. You'll have fun with that, Mark. We've seen, we've seen plenty of them. Get the AC over there, Ron. planning board members? Anything from staff? No? Good.
The next historic board meeting is August 13th, Monday.
Okay, August 13th, okay. Can entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Vichette, second by Mr. Lockhart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We adjourn, good night, and thank you, everyone.